But they deal with schools too, so. Yeah.
Let's go through the resolution for the purchase of that.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there are any changes from our agreement with footballs, Jeff and I will bring it back to the board for review. And this is everybody's favorite, I know. Board policy review. But we, by golly, we are getting close to the end.
Yeah, we're really getting to a different era.
We are getting close to this, into this dream. I did make some notes on each of the policies, just for your reference. Forty-two thirty-five is for public performance, student performance, band music, and so forth, drama. Forty-two thirty-seven is for advertising. And having contests at the school. Forty-two sixty is the school use policy to having groups come and use our facility like more of a committee like the community committee, so. Obviously, we want to keep that. Forty-two sixty-five is community ed program. In the case that we ever want to offer community ed classes, maybe we want to have a tech class or something. This gives us the ability to do that. Forty-three hundred is limited law enforcement help with immigration. Which is not one that we've had before, because it's a new policy from WASDA. Forty-three ten is law enforcement assistance, how we work with our local law enforcement. That's an existing policy. Forty-three eleven, school safety. That's been moved around from some other policy areas. And you can see that we, in this latest version of WASDA. Forty-three fourteen is for school threats. And forty-three fifteen is for, basically, there's a law that says we notify our community when we have somebody who's been, it could be a sexual predator or kidnapping. Those are now in the three thousand series, so the policies are still there, but they have just moved to now thirty, thirty-two twenty-five and thirty-one forty-four. Forty-three twenty is co-op prob- programs. We have a co-op currently with Clealum for our transportation needs. We used to have one for athletics with Thorpe in the recent past. And Clealum, thank you. Forty-four hundred is election activities that as a school district, we cannot promote or assist any kind of political programs. Whether we think it's a good idea or not, we can't do that as a district. And forty-five hundred is probably one we want to put in there, that's for drones and quadcopters. Yes. So I, you know, in looking at these, I don't think there's any that we probably wouldn't want to look at. I know forty-three hundred might look, need some further discussion, I would suggest.
I look at forty-three hundred, but it kind of goes with forty-three ten as well, so. I mean. Personally, I think we adopt it.
So I didn't find anything there that, you know, yeah, we don't need to do that, but I'll move that up to the, to the board and decide.
I have forty-three hundred for adoption, it's forty-three eleven.
It could be forty-three eleven, what if we want to come?
Yes.
It's essential.
Gotcha.
And then Erin, your suggestion was forty-five hundred?
Yeah, I would put forty-five hundred, since we are starting to do lots of drones and quadcopters.
So that looks like approving everything except for forty-two thirty-five?
Forty-two thirty-five, I don't think there's any harm in doing that.
So just approve all of that?
I make a motion to approve all those ones.
All up there?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Second.
You still with us, Chris?
Come on, Chris, good job.
He's on the way over there.
It takes the sound a lot.
It's bandwidth.
Time, time, time delay over there.
The next section is going to be. Surplus items.
We have some surplus items. Thank you to Mr. Brennan for taking the photos and the information, but we are requesting to surplus East, old Easton Bus Three. And I separated out the seats, so if people wanted to buy seats, they can buy seats. Easton Bus Four, same thing, separated out the seats, so they can buy seats if they'd like to.
All the seats?
I did, twenty-five dollars per bench.
But I mean, bus itself, all the seats are stripped out.
Not currently, if we, let's say we, in Bus Four, we, somebody bids on, they want one seat, they want seat out. Give the rest over there.
You need any couches?
Uh, no. I'm really good at buying a repair on bus for you. You know, my current bus is still working. Oh, okay. Somebody wants, you know, seats out in their shop or whatnot, you know, twenty-five dollars a bench, you can't beat that.
Yeah. Ultimately, back to pickup.
We have some file cabinets, we have some locker sections, and we have some of our old playground equipment.
I almost feel like buying the monkey bars for my kids, just. Just eat that, never go.
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus list.
Second.
All up there?
All right. Thank you. I do too, so I will post those and put them in the newsletter, so we'll start getting some, hopefully some bids.
All right. Section nine, board discussions. Nine one. The whole WASDA conference presentation.
So the presentations are due the thirty-first for submittal. But if we, as a, as a board and superintendent team, want to submit a proposal, I'm happy to do that. And whatever topic he would like. We have been through quite a lot as a board in the last three years, so we've had some, certainly some areas of expertise and things we probably don't want to revisit, but it'd be good learning opportunities for other boards and, you know, we are doing some really cool things with outdoor ed and our school, so.
Oh, and not just that, we went from one sports program to, what are we at, eight? That's in a matter of a couple of years. That's kind of huge, and now we're putting in the football field.
Athletic field.
It could be both types of football.
Well, that's true. American football and football.
Football and football.
So would the board like me to submit a proposal?
Sure.
So that means somebody would need to go with me to the conference.
Good thing you got a board chair that raised her hand, so I'm gonna have to go, because there's a a few other reasons I don't want to go.
Oh, come on. Looking for that.
And what would we like our topic to be?
Communication. I mean, small district turnaround.
Yeah, I would go with that.
Yeah.
You look at it.
It gives us a nice open-ended, we can kind of have it more set up.
Three years ago, we had one sports team, we had thirty thousand dollars in the bank.
Okay.
And, you know. Would, would we done with the outdoor ed sports, and we're able to buy vehicles now? And put in two new playgrounds, tennis courts.
Angela or Erin, would this be something you guys would want to attend as well? It's in, it's in Seattle. There's no cost to you guys?
I mean, it's catered.
Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. Angela loves volunteer. So, no pressure, but as we get closer, I'll keep reminding you.
Okay.
Because it would be nice to have, you know, a student respected for most students, but no, no pressure here, okay? So, so I will come up with something and, yeah, submit proposal.
I think overall to that too, at least for me, like, one of the things that I learned many years ago now at the WASDA conference was about leadership turn and how we were just a terrible spiral of leadership turn in Houston. And that's what we had to ultimately focus on to kind of fix that. So, thank you. For taking us out of that downward spiral of doom and bringing us back to, we can list all of these things now, but we're like, we're so happy. Oh, sorry, not to my house.
We are a team, so it's, we're, we're in this together.
But we can give you an example of how you can get out of that. But it has to, you have to, you know, you need to be dedicated to, you know, trying to get people here in that five to eight-year leadership. But I think that has all been achieved so much more quickly.
It is a tough job, but every job's tough in its own way, so. And the second item, we've already talked about the block schedule, so I didn't realize I'd put it in my superintendent report as well, unless there's, there's other questions.
Yeah. Looking forward to Seattle.
And I did tell the staff, you know, after a year, we can't change mid some, mid-year. We're not going to change at the semesters.
Locked in.
If we, if we like it, at the end of the next school year, we'll continue it, and if we don't, we'll revisit it, so. And we're not locked in, and really, it doesn't really impact our elementary teachers at all, so they're still going to have their daily prep time, so it's really our secondary teachers who are the driving force. Yay.
All right, I think we are ready for the executive session.
Yeah, I think fifteen, twenty minutes is all, all we need.
All right.
Maybe you want to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion during the executive session for fifteen, twenty minutes.
A second. All up there?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna give it a few minutes, see if you were gonna say.
He heard the second of session quickly.
Erin, thank you, Angela, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
I think we did say it was fair to consider professional negotiations.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I love this sentence. Yeah, thank you. I figured.
Teacher, just there. Teacher, just there. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna turn this to the video.
I'll make a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back from the executive session and moving into sharing of any good news. And it looks like we have a couple of videos in this section, so.
I see quadcopter footage. You know, I think I've already shared this with you. This is, I think I forgot to change my content. So this was a copy and paste, so.
Oh, okay.
We can look at it again.
You're right, the quadcopter.
You know, basically just duplicate a whole meeting, but I think I forgot to change my.
Oh, yeah. I'm definitely like down for us to do a new director picture.
I was gonna have Patrick do it, but he's on field trip today.
Oh, right, yeah. So maybe at graduation, if there is one. Will I be at graduation?
I won't be there.
Okay.
I will be there. I'll be working on my speech.
Believe me, I'd prefer to go to graduation.
I would. In terms of good news, great field trips going on with kids, staff. Pretty special that we can offer these opportunities for our kids. Oh, yeah. Mount St. Helens for a couple nights, Cape Disappointment earlier this week. A theme park that we're going to.
The kids are so excited about Silverwood.
Yeah.
So fucking excited.
First I had to tell them we weren't going.
Yeah, last Wednesday, I walked in and it was like, oh, there's an air in here. And then by the end of the day, it was much better.
There were there were some tears, but now that we are able to go, it's pretty darn good.
Yes, it saved me a trip to.
I thank the board for their support of what we're doing for our kids and. Sorry, but they're not gonna remember algebra, but they will remember the trips mounting. Absolutely. So those are special moments that we're making, so thank you.
A lot of them are doing Silverwood and then they've got slide waters the following week. I just wanted to share too from the Memorial Day Parade. I had just a random lady talking to me. I don't think she knew that I was associated with this. She was just seeing how she comes every year to visit. She's from South Dakota and comes every year to visit Easton. And this is her absolute favorite school in the world that she's ever seen. She just always has to bring someone with her to come and check it out every year. She's just been so impressed with all the upgrades and changes.
Tell her next time bring your blankets. That's right. I'll have it roll the papers on me.
Let's call it a wrap then.
I make a motion during the meeting.
Second. Oh, big.
Aye.
Like it's a bunch of pirates in here. I think May is probably part of them. No.